Hi everyone, my name is Mohamed Sidki. I'm the AIA Summit here, County Chapter President. I want to welcome you all to our last AREE 5.0 study session for the year. Today, we are very excited to have Joy Chi Chin with us as she will be discussing door hardware. Next slide. Before we start, I'd like to make a few chapter announcements. First, we want to say thank you to our sponsors, our AREE series sponsor Heather Young Architects, our Platinum Chapter sponsor Leian Brays Engineering, our Gold Chapter sponsors Roman Engineers and MN Builders, and our Silver Chapter sponsors Domenchi Marvel and BKG Structural Engineers. Next. Okay, session rules. Please meet yourself to reduce background noise. The speaker will pose at the end of each section to give time for questions. Also, feel free to add questions in the chat box below at any time. Do not discuss any specific exam questions. That's not permitted by NCARP and not that this session is being recorded. Next. Okay, a little bit about our guest speaker. So Joy Chi Chin is a licensed California architect. She works with DES Architects and Engineers and has worked on multiple project types. She loves working on construction documents and specs. Joy Chi passed all her AREE exams on the first attempt and would love to share some of her knowledge and help others pass their exams. And Joy Chi actually is my coworker and a good friend of mine, so be nice with the questions. Okay, Joy Chi, you can take it from here.
Thank you, Mohamed, for the introduction and good evening, everyone. As Mohamed mentioned, I passed my PPD and PDD exam on my first try earlier this year. So today, I'm going to share some of the notes and the knowledge about door hardware with you. So today's topic is door hardware. It is a small topic in the whole PPD/PDD scope, but it is also a very practical topic that you may benefit from for your everyday work. I also would like to disclaim that I am not a doors hardware specialist. I'm sharing my study notes and some of the basics you need to know for your general practice. But for any project-specific questions, I suggest that you consult with a hardware specialist. So with no delay, let's just jump right in. There are many types of doors. This graphic is showing the doors classified by types of operation. There are swing doors, sliding doors, folding doors, overhead doors, revolving doors, etc. The most common door type is a swinging door. And today, we will focus on the hinge doors. Take a simple swing door as an example. There are three major components of a door system. There, the door itself, call it door leaf, the door frame around it, and hardware. So each must be coordinated with the other component and be appropriate for the circumstances and the design intent. So look at the graphic here. You can identify there's door head, door gem, and door seal and threshold. On the door gem, you have two sides and we call it strike side and hinge side. You can see here the strike side of the door. Although this graphic only has very few hardware showing up, it is important to identify these basic terms before we dive into the door hardware. Okay, here is an example you may have seen on your project. I have a door schedule on the top, a partial floor plan on the left, and a hardware schedule on the right. Let's look at the door schedule. So I have the first three columns here. They are the door number, door location, and door hand. Those three items you can identify from my floor plan. So the door number is identified and the room it swings into is identified. And the hand, you can determine the hand of the door by looking at the floor plan. Next few columns are related to the door itself. So the door leaf, where I have the elevation, the width, the height, the thickness, materials, finishes, and light kit. So those are the door components. And then I have frame component. So the frame material, the frame finish, profile, its elevation, and then what the detail, head detail, gem detail, threshold detail, and then which wall it is in, the partition type, the thickness of the wall, the label of it. And this is about the con reader. So but the most important thing is the hardware group that we are going to discuss in this presentation. So hardware group I identified as numbers here or a combination of letters and numbers. So I have Group 01 and you can relate it to the hardware schedule that I have Hardware Group 01. I have another group called E3. So in each hardware group, I have a bunch of hardware elements. So we are going to discuss each of them in this presentation. So I know that there's a lot of information on the door schedule and hardware schedule. So we will break into pieces, explain each element. But first thing first, I have a question for you. So look at the door schedule here. I have the hand. What does that mean? My first question is, use the graphic on the right. Please identify the door handing in order. Right hand, right hand reverse, left hand, left hand reverse. So I have 1, 2, 3, 4, 4 doors. Which door is right hand door? Which door is left hand door? And the left hand reverse and right hand reverse. Please identify them. There's a poll showing up.
And we will give one minute. Is that good, Joy Chi? One minute?
Yeah.
Okay. So 16% voted. 32%. Okay, we'll give 10 more seconds, then we will end polling. Okay, share results.
Ooh, not bad. Most people get it right.
Yeah, yeah, that's good.
Okay, so the right answer is E. Okay, the hand of a door is determined from the outside of the door. So the exterior of a building is considered outside as is the hallway side of a room door or a lobby side of a door opening into a room. In situations where the distinction is not clear, the outside is considered the side of the door where the hinge is not visible. So to determine that, when you're standing outside the door and looking at the door, if the hinge is on the left and swing away from you, meaning that you are pushing it to open, then it's a left hand door. Same idea, if you're standing outside, the hinge is on your right hand side and you push that open, that's a right hand door. If you stand outside, hinge on the left, but you have to pull it, it's swing towards you, that's a left hand reverse door. And same idea, if you stand outside, the hinge on your right hand side and swing towards you, then it's a right hand reverse door. And you may wonder, why do we need to know the door handing? The handing is used by the specifier, door hardware supplier, manufacturer to identify, to indicate exactly what kind of hardware must be supplied for a specific opening. It is because some hardware will only work on a door that swings in a particular way. So let's go back to my door schedule. Let's check the work. So I can identify door 113. That is the door here into a storage room. Because when I stand outside this room, the hinge is on my left hand side and it's swing away from me. So it's a left hand door. I abbreviate as LH. So I will pause here to see if anyone has questions about door handing. I'll take as no. Okay, that's easy. Then we move on to our next slide. So hardware is a vital part of any door opening assembly. In general, hardware can be grouped according to the function it serves based on the following list. Handing the door, we use hinge, pivot, or a combination of pivot and closer. Operating the door, we can use handles. We have use lock set, push plate, and push bar. Closing the door, we have a door closer and a combination of pivot and closer. Locking the door, we will use lock set, deadbolt, flush bolt, electric locks, and other special devices. Seating the door, you will see weather stripping, sound seals, smoke seals. Protecting the door, you will see kick plate, corner protections, and similar material. So when we talked about the door hardware group as an essential part of your door schedule, we are really talking about the combination of these elements. Therefore, we need to understand each of them, their function, and the circumstances you apply them. So the first thing is handing the door. So hinges is the most common method of attaching a door to its frame. Gingers are also referred to as butts because they are usually attached to the butt edge of the door. Gingers consist of two leaves with an odd number of the knuckles on one leaf and an even number on the knuckles on the other. The knuckles are attached with a pin and the pin and knuckles form the barrel of the hinge, which is finished with the tip. So you can see the barrel here. There are four basic types of hinge. Full mortise, half mortise, full surface, and half surface. Full mortise is the most common type that has both leaves fully mortised into the frame edge of the door. Let's see, it is fully concealed. Half mortise hinge leaves surface applied to the frame and mortise into the door edge. So this is applied to the surface and it is mortised into the door. Half mortise hinge leaves our surface applied to the frame. Sorry, half, half surface hinge have one leaf mounted on the face of the door and the other leaf mortised into the frame. So you see the surface mounted on the door, but mortised into the frame. And the full surface hinge applied to the surface of both door and frame. Let's see here. The various type of hinges are used when either the door or frame cannot be mortised. For example, a half mortise hinge may be bolted or welded to a heavy steel frame. You can see here, this is a steel frame and you cannot mortise into it. So you have to surface apply it. So we can go back to our hardware schedule. So when you look at our hardware schedule, the hinge are listed here. So with the hinge, you will see the number here and the description of it. So first, let's look at the number of hinges. The number of hinges is determined by the height of the door. Doors up to 60 inches high require two hinges. Doors from 60 inches to 90 inches require three hinges. And the doors 90 inches to 120 inches require four hinges. And then we can look into the, oh, so here you can see I have a standard hinges because I have two doors in this group. So each door will receive four hinges because I think I have a foot door here. The door is quite tall, so I need four hinges. And here I have three doors. So you will see there are nine standard hinges and I also have electrified hinges. So in total, I have 12 hinges and I have three doors. So each door will receive four hinges as well. We'll talk about electrified hinges in the later slide. Next number you will see, so here I have hanger BB. That's the model type. But 4.5 inch by 4.5 inches is the size of the hinge. So the first number is the length of the hinge. It is the, actually, the length of the barrel vertically. That's the lens. And the second number is the width of the hinge. So the width of the hinge is identified when it's fully open. So this is the width of the hinge. So both the length and the width are determined by the door width and the door thickness. So if I have a 3 foot wide door and the thickness is 1 and 3/4 inch, I will use a 4.5 inch by 4.5 inches hinge. Okay, so that's so much about the hinge. You will see other numbers. Those are about to finish. I will extend that in the next few slides as well. I will also pause here to see if anyone have questions about hinges. The number of hinges, the size of hinges, the type of hinges.
Actually, I have a, I have a question.
Yeah.
So when, when you select the hanger BB 116884, what does that mean?
That's the model number. So hanger is the manufacturer and that's the model number they have.
Okay.
Yeah. So what you gonna, so this is a submit, all right? So when they submit that to you, what you care about is the size of it and how many they have.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any questions?
Yeah, I have a question.
Yeah.
So when would you consider choosing half surface versus full surface? I mean, other than, I guess, applying the hinge to the jam, whether it's metal or not. But is there, is there an advantage to choosing one over the other? I know a full mortise, you probably want to do it on an exterior door, right?
And also, yeah. And also, I think architects would care about the look of it, right? So to me, like, if I can use the most concealed, that's the best I can, I can choose.
Okay.
If possible.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense.
And I would, and I would add, if it's for security reasons, you, for exterior doors, for example, you want to use the full mortise because you don't want someone to come and open that hinge and then open the door and access the building. So that would be, besides the statics, it's, it's more secure if you have it full mortise, for example, when it's for exterior or for a door that you want to make sure no one can access it.
Yeah, good point, Mohamed.
Okay.
So that can be a question, right? In the exam, or was like, which hinge is more secure or for exterior door?
Yeah, definitely A.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, I have a question. And then on the exam, they're gonna show exactly like what you're seeing right there on the presentation? The diagram, the pictures, is it gonna look exactly like that on the exam? You just gotta identify it?
Mohamed.
We, we, we don't really know what you will get exactly in the exam. It's, it might be anything, it might be anything. But this is the concept, basically, this is the idea.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions before we move on to the next topic? Take a note. So I have a question for you. So our next topic is operating the door. So here's the second question. Which door handle is not in compliance with accessibility design? A lever or a knob?
So we'll give 30 seconds because it's an easy question. 50% voted. We'll give five more seconds. And and polling. Okay.
Yay.
Yeah, 89% chose the correct answer.
So the correct answer is B, lever. Okay. Per 2010 ADA standard, section 4.13.9, door hardware handles, pulls, latches, locks, and other operating devices on an accessible door shall have a shape that is easy to grasp with one hand and does not require tight grasping, tight pinching, or twisting of the width to operate. Lever-operated mechanism, push-type mechanism, and U-shaped handles are acceptable designs. When sliding doors are fully open, operating hardware shall be exposed and usable from both sides. Hardware required for accessible door passage shall be mounted no higher than 48 inches above finished floor. Answer is B, lever. Move on to next, latches and lock set. Latch set and lock set are devices to hold a door in a closed position and lock it. A latch set only holds the door in place with no provisions for locking. It has a beaver latch extended from the face of the door edge and automatically engage the strike mounted in the frame when the door is closed. So this is the latch bolt, to be able to see. A lock set is a special mechanism that allows the door to be locked with a key or something. So there are four types of latches and locks. A mortise lock set, preassembled, board, and interconnected. A mortise lock is installed in a rectangular area cut out of the door. It is usually more secure than a board lock and offers a much wider variety of locking options. Mortise lock allows the use of a deadbolt, latch bolt, both of which can be retracted with a single operation. A variety of knobs and levers handle design can be used in the basic mechanism. In our case, we will only use levers for ADA. Preassembled lock and latches come from a factory as a complete unit. They are slid into the notch made in the edge of the door and require very little adjustment. Preassembled locks are very seldom to use anymore and they are often found in older buildings. Board lock. Board lock and latches are installed by boring holes through the face of the door and from the edge of the door to the other board opening. They are relatively easy to install and are less expensive than mortise lock, but they offer fewer operating functions than the mortise lock. They are generally used in residential and commercial, a small commercial project. So in your home, you always see the board lock a lot. Interconnected lock have a cylinder lock and a deadbolt. So the, you have this latch bolt and deadbolt. And the two locks are interconnected so that a single action of turning the knob or lever handle on inside can release both bolt. So I have the third question for you. The type of the lock set that is most secure is a unit lock, cylindrical lock, rim lock, or mortise lock? Which one is more secure?
Okay, 70% voted. We'll give five more seconds and then we'll end polling.
Yay, this time 95%.
Yeah, that's good.
Good job. So yes, a mortise lock is the most secure type of lock set. So in the exam, you may see those names or terminology that you are not familiar with. But as long as you know the correct one, then you will be able to pick the right answer. And others might just be distractions for you. So let's look at here. Mortise lock, the answer is D. Mortise lock are the most secure type of lock set because the mechanism is concealed within the leaf of the door. Unit locks are installed into the notch and cut into the leaf of the door, just like the preassembled lock that we just talked about. Cylinder lock is installed through the hole and drilled into the leaf. This is the board lock that we also talked about. And you may interfere other And you may, um, interfere other names like tubular lock and things like that. But they are not the most secure because you only have one small hole in the door. Um, versus modest lock, you cut a whole piece and, um, it's really hard to break it. So a rim lock is mounted on the surface, uh, on the face of the leaf. So this is definitely not secure. And, um, applied to the face of the door, so, um, can be easily taken off. Because each of these type lock set leaves portion of the mechanical, mechanism exposed. So it will be easily tempered and, uh, wised and are not secure as the modest lock set. Okay. So I have another graphic showing the lock set. So this is a graphic from, um, Schlag, um, catalog from one of our manufacturer. So, um, this graphic shows the assembly of the lock set as a section view. And, um, it is, it is pretty intuitive, like you have a key lock here. Um, this is the legend showing what does that mean? Um, and you will see the knob here. Uh, I would suggest that we only use levers for ADA, but for graphic, it shows a knob, but you know that's the handle of it. And from the inside here, you have a something and another lever. Um, because this is a section view, so you have that bolt, um, and latches here. So. My fourth question for you is, please place the lock set above in order of from a corridor to a room, office, bedroom, storeroom, and staircase. So which lock set you will use for an office, bedroom, storeroom, and staircase? So I have a small graphic here, just for you to reference back. This might take a bit longer.
Another ten seconds, twenty seconds? What do you think, Jai Chi?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So we'll give another ten seconds. We have almost seventy percent voted. And we are ending now.
Okay. Let's look at the answer, the answer is B, yeah, most people get it right.
Yep.
Okay, so we can look at each lock set. If you're from a corridor entering an office, typically you will need a key to access to your office, to secure your office. And, uh, when you are inside office, you might need a something, so you don't want other people to come in. So that's why you will pick this, um, lock set. It's also called, um, office and inner entry lock. You can read the description of it, um, the latch bolt retracted by lever knob from either side unless outside lever is locked by a key or a something. With outside locked, latch bolt retracted by key or inside lever, outside lever locked until unlocked by something or key. Entry latch that bolt, that locks, latch bolt when the door is closed, inside lever always free for immediate egress. So next one is when you go into a bedroom. So for the bedroom, because you are inside your unit, you probably don't need to lock it, key, keyed it. But when you are inside your bedroom, you may want to, um, something it when you are in the bedroom. So that's the something inside. But you also have this little guy, this is, um, can go back to our graphic. This is called emergency term keys. So, um, sometimes you have the kid inside the bedroom accidentally, um, lock themselves and this emergency key can help to open the door and save them. And so next is the storeroom. So the storeroom, you will need a key to secure the room, but you probably don't need a something when you are inside the storeroom. That's why we choose, um, this type. And, um, for the stair, it's kind of a passing way, so it's called passing latch. The latch retracted, um, from both side all the time, you don't need any locks. Um, you don't want lock yourself in the stair. And you, the stairs is for egress, so you don't need any key to operate it. So that is how I select those lock set. I would highly recommend to check the Amber Book Forty Minutes of Competence channel. Um, the door lock is on the zero zero four topic, and there's a link below. Muhammad, if you can paste that to the chat box, that'd be great. So people can check, um, afterwards.
Um, quick question, um, are we gonna be having these, uh, slides or, um, whatever is being presented right now?
So, um, this presentation is, um, recorded, so you can always go back and watch the video. But, um, yeah.
I, I will be, uh, posting this to our YouTube channel over this weekend. Uh, just go to YouTube, search for AIA Summit of County, and you should see this recording for this one and all the previous, like, all this year recordings. You will see it on the YouTube channel, there is one bar for like all the ARD statements.
Perfect, perfect, thank you.
Okay, let's look back our door hardware schedule. So you will see I have the storeroom lock set identified here. And again, um, the top is the quantity of it, I have three doors, I have three lock set. And, um, same, um, I have the lock set identified here. And you can see, um, sometimes even in the same seminar, they call it differently, although they refer to similar, um, model, the L ninety eighty. So, but here is night LV ninety eighty. And you will also see the door handling here, left-handed, um, left-handed reverse, so that, oh, sorry. That also indicate like, um, specific hardware is, um, only used for a specific opening. Okay, um, I will pause again here if you have other questions about the lock set.
Yeah, um, I got a question on the difference between the mortise and the interconnected. Um, I, I don't understand it still, what's the difference between the two?
Yeah, so these two, and you can see from the graphic mortise, you have a big piece and this is one, like, one big piece here. But interconnected, it has two independent piece, but they just interconnect with, um, with another piece, um, it's called interconnect mechanism housing. So, uh, you can, this is less secure because you, you kind of can disassemble it separately, but here it's one piece, right? So, um, that's the difference. And you have a lot of choice here. You can select, uh, your cylinder lock and you can have other options about, um, those latch bolt. But you don't have those options here with the interconnected locks.
Oh, great, thanks, that definitely helps, okay.
Any other questions? Okay, move on to the next topic. So here, other type of hardware. So it's the same door hardware schedule, we already talked about hinge. We talked about the cylinder lock, we talked about, uh, lock set. And, um, now it leaves us the sur- surface closer, exit device, threshold, weather stripping, what are those? And, uh, what are the function of those elements? So the easiest one is the threshold. You often see the threshold, um, this is an image of it. But there's a ADA requirement at the threshold. So, um, ADA section three, uh, four point thirteen point eight threshold at doorway. Threshold at doorway shall not exceed three-quarter range in height for exterior sliding doors or half an inch for other types of doors. Race threshold and floor level changes at accessible doorways shall be beveled with a slope no greater than one to two. So that's what you see from the picture here. So this threshold is sloped, um, with beveled edge. When you change, you have change in level, if the change is up to quarter inch, it can be vertical without any edge treatment. But when this, the change is between quarter inch to half an inch, you have to have a slope that no greater than one to two. And anything above half an inch in change level shall be accomplished by means of a ramp that combines, uh, with the ramp requirement. Okay, that's the threshold. And I think that's my last question for you today is, please identify the coordinator in the images below. Coordinator is a hardware piece. I have seven pieces here, which one is a coordinator?
I, Jai Chi, I didn't see the answer on the poll.
So you identify by letter, so A is this image, B is this image, C is this image, D, E, and F, and G.
But I don't see G in the poll.
Oh.
Oh, I see that.
Yeah, G is missing, uh.
Oh, you can eliminate one. Eliminate G is not the answer.
G, G is not the correct answer, don't worry about G. We just made it.
That, that was my answer. Okay, we'll give ten more seconds. And. Well, and here.
Yay, I think we got most people correct here again.
Except for Ryan.
So, uh, thanks for pointing this out, this is actually, uh, so someone told me that G was the coordinator, do you, do you know what that's called?
Yeah, so let's go to the next slide.
That's, ah, okay. Thank you.
Right, so I identified, um, all these elements. So coordinator, so both coordinator and astrogo are work, um, on a double door. We talk about the single door all the time in this presentation, but these two are for the double door, that's a trick here. Um, anyway, so coordinator is used, um, on a double door when you have two leaves, which one, uh, close first and which one close next? And when you have an astrogo here, this is extra piece on the leaf, right? So it is important to know that the piece has, uh, the leaf had the astrogo piece have to close first, then the other follows. Otherwise, you, you have, um, if you close the, the other piece first, then the astrogo will be in the way and you cannot fully close the door. Makes sense? The coordinator helps, um, which one close first and which one close next? And you can see here, the mechanism of it is like one, one leg and the other. That's for the two, um, door leaves. Um, okay, we can go to other door hardwares. So the image here is a door service closer. It usually mounted on the top of the door. It has a leg and a frame. Um, panic hardware, you must be very familiar with that. And automatic door bottom that help to seal the door at the bottom. Weather stripping is another kind of, um, seal on the door. So usually it is mounted on the exterior door. When, um, the rainwater falls in, it will fall off, um, away from your door. And also, um, this little brush here will brush out the dust. And threshold, we already talked about, um, doorstop, doorstop and bumper. So the left one is a floor-mounted doorstop and the right-hand side one is a bumper on the wall. And we talk about astrogo, it is used on the one leaf of the double door. So, yeah, most of you get the answer correct, congratulations. Do you have any questions about other type of hardwares? Okay, let's move on to the next. Electronic hardware. Electronic hardware include devices that controls or monitor door opening using electronic, uh, electric and or electron mechanical means. An electric lock maintains a mortise or board lock set in a locked position until a signal is activated by some type of regulating device. Regulating device can include a wall switch, push button, car reader, key switch, computerized controls, automatic time devices, security console, and other sophisticated control devices. Electronic locks can also be specified so that they automatically open if there's a power failure. In other cases, uh, in either cases, the inside knob and handle mechanically unleashes the door for exiting at any time. Electric locks requires the use of electric hinges or other power transfer devices to make the low-voltage wiring connections from the door frame to the mechanism in the door. On our door hardware schedule, you see here. On our door hardware schedule, you see here, um, I have a electrified hinge. Identify here because all these rooms I have car readers. So um, that is about electronic hardware. It's pretty straightforward, so you have the controls to the hinge and. And then you need provide low voltage power for it. Next. Hardware finishes. Hardware is available in a variety of finishes. The choice of which is depend on primarily on the appearance desire, but also its ability to withstand use and weathering. Hardware finishes have been standardized according to the numbers that are divided by federal government. It's the US um designation. And, and the Builder Hardware Manufacturer Association identifies BHMA number. So this is a, a list of those numbers and it's finished described. And so that comes to our last column on the hardware schedule is the finish of it. So you can see here, I have US 206D identified here. It's equal to six to six um from the BHMA number. It's a satin chrome plate. Finish, I also have different finish called six thirty, which is a satin stainless steel finish. Okay, anyone has questions about the finish and electronic hardware? Good. Okay, then. Just to recap, today we talked about um the door hardware. Hardware schedule, how to read the door schedule. Um, we had focus on the hand of the door, the hardware group, we identify each element. Um, what the function for it and where to use it. Think that, that is, I have a few more minutes. So I have a bonus slide for you, it's about the door clearance. So you may want to review the door clearance since we're talking about the doors before your exam as well. So be clear about the door from the push side. Um, or it's the pull side, how you approach a door. The clearance will be different if it's front approach or side approach, on which side it approach. So um, for the exam, you might encounter a question about the door clearance, any of those matter. Okay, so just get yourself familiar with those clearance numbers. And um, I think that's everything I have for today's presentation.
Thank you so much, Jiechi, for an excellent presentation. I really enjoyed the words, good, good information here. Um, yeah, thank you so much for this.
Uh, so do we have any question from the chat box?
Um, let me see, I think there was a question, just a minute. There was a question that was in the beginning. Uh, how do you determine the size of the hinge? That was the only question I saw. The only question I saw.
Okay, we can go back to the slides before we take off. So, yes, the size of the hinge, I have it here, four and a half inches by four and a half inch, right? So um. The size of the hinge is determined by the door width. So if you are interested, there's a table, like how wide the door should be and um what's the size can be accommodate um that width. And also the thickness is with it as well. It is from, you can take a look, uh, if you have the balance book. It is a table, um, forty-two point two, that you can determine how um the hinge height is. And the width, so I have, that's the length, right? So that's the height, with a code length, that's determined by the width of the door and the thickness of the door. There's a table that we can check um which one is which. And for, for the width. Which is, let me go back to my slide. For this side, it's also determined by the thickness of the door. I believe if your thickness is two times of the thickness of the uh, the door plus half an inch. So um, I have one and three-quarter, two times of it is what? Um, three and a half plus half an inch and plus the, the size of the bevel. So it all adds up to four and a half inch. That's how we determine the size of it. Okay, I hope that answers your question.
So let me ask something while we're, we're in this, this um question. So you, not that the weight uh, maybe a factor that uh we choose a specific hinge for. Correct? So how we determine, determine how, how uh this hardware, is it like supposed to be like a, a heavy-duty uh, uh, hinge? Or how we determine, determine it accordingly?
So you talk about two things, heavy-duty, it's also uh not just about the weight and also the finish of it, right? So some finish is just by nature, it's not heavy-duty. Like wood door, you won't think about it as a heavy-duty door. You may think about a metal door, right? So um, the finish of it is one piece. And the weight, yes, um, the weight of it is also another piece. But um from the study material I have, um, I. So it says it's determined by the size, meaning the width and height of it. It didn't talk about the weight um for some reason, but I think you have a good point. Weight might um, might play in a role here as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions before we end for today? Okay, then I think, again, thank you so much, Jiechi, really good, really, really excellent presentation. Uh, a, a lot of good information here. Uh, not, not just for someone who's taking the exam, but for any architect, it's, uh, it's really good, it's very useful. And uh, thank you all for attending, thank you for attending this session. Uh, we have these sessions once a month, so this is our last for this year. And best of luck with your exams, happy holidays and yeah, we'll see you next year.
Happy holidays.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye.
Bye-bye.